All right, good evening. Today is Thursday, February 28th. This is 6:30 PM. We are in the Olentangie Administrative Offices, the Berlin Room. This is the Olentangie Board of Education, our February meeting. With that, I'll call the meeting to order. Ms. Hatfield, please call the roll.
Mr. Bart?
Here.
Mrs. Feasel?
Here.
Mr. King is absent. Mrs. Patrick?
Here.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Here. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I will now entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written.
So moved.
Second, please.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion on the agenda?
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. Bart?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, we have our presentation, which is the Oak Creek Elementary Choir. Elizabeth Westhoven is the instructor, and she's going to bring her group in.
Yay! On a mission.
Oh, I get thrown, row.
They're on a mission.
Support kids, don't scare them. That's a lot of kiddos. All right.
Good morning.
It's okay.
You want to come sit with me?
My name is Elizabeth Westhoven, and I have been the music director at Oak Creek Elementary School. And these are my wonderful fifth grade choir members who are a part of our Oak Creek Elementary School Choir. Today, we will be performing three pieces for you. The first song is entitled "To Stop the Train," which you'll see them sing in two parts. The second piece is entitled "Jantulamula." You'll hear them sing it in both English and French. And the final piece is entitled "We All Need Peace," which was composed for the World Peace Day. So we hope you enjoy.
If you guys want to come over to take your pictures. Okay.
We'll show it.
All right, make sure. Thank you.
Here we go. To stop the train. In cases of emergency, you pull down the chain. Pull down the chain. Penalty for improper use, five pounds. To stop the train. To stop the train. In cases of emergency, you pull down the chain. Pull down the chain. Penalty for improper use, five pounds. To stop the train. In cases of emergency, you pull down the chain. Pull down the chain. Penalty for improper use, five pounds. I do the middle. I do the middle. Tiki, taka. I do the middle. Taka. I do the middle. Tiki, taka. I do the middle. Taka. Tick, tick, taka. Tick, tick, taka. Tika, taka. Tika, taka. I do the middle. Tiki, taka. I do the middle. Taka. Jantulamula. Tiki, taka. Jantulamula. Taka. Jantulamula. Tiki, taka. Jantulamula. Taka. Tick, tick, taka. Tick, tick, taka. Tika, taka. Jantulamula. Tiki, taka. Jantulamula. Taka. Jantulamula. Tiki, taka. Jantulamula. Taka. Jantulamula. Tiki, taka. Jantulamula. Taka. Tick, tick, taka. Tick, tick, taka. Tika, taka. Jantulamula. Tiki, taka. Jantulamula. Taka. Jantulamula. Tiki, taka. Jantulamula. Taka. Jantulamula. Tiki, taka. Jantulamula. Taka. Tick, tick, taka. Tick, tick, taka. Tika, taka. Jantulamula. Tiki, taka. Jantulamula. Taka. Jantulamula. Taka. We all need love. So we can fill the world with hope. We all need hope. So we can build a lasting peace. We all need peace to keep our dreams alive. We all need peace to make our planet dry. We need to sing. So that the world can hear our song. We need a song. So that the world can sing along. Our song will spread its message loud and clear. Our song will spread to people far and near. Together, we can learn to harmonize, to break together different views. We'll find a million ways to verbalize. Our message strong and right and true. We all need love. We all need love. So we can fill the world with hope. We all need hope. We all need hope. So we can build a lasting peace. We all need peace to keep our dreams alive. We all need peace to make our planet dry. To make our planet dry. To keep our dreams alive. We all need love. We all need hope. We all need peace.
All right, thank you for the honor of letting us come. Do you have any questions for us?
What grades of students do we have?
These are just the fifth graders from our Oak Creek Choir. So there's about 120 students in our choir, but these represent just the fifth graders.
Great.
Yes.
So how many hours are you guys practicing a week?
Would anyone like to answer that, Grace Lynn?
We meet every Friday morning or about almost noon.
Wow.
And that's before school?
Before school?
Yeah.
It's dedicated.
Yeah, very dedicated.
Oh, you won, so.
Great.
Anything else?
That was great.
All right, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
All right.
Run for the aisle.
She did it. She did it. She did it.
Just takes a little bit long sometimes.
She did it.
Everyone is welcome to stay, but we understand if you want to take your.
This will be longer than the meeting, than leaving. Thank you for coming.
That was really.
Oh, it's fabulous. That was a beautiful last.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You were really good.
It's an honor to meet you.
Yes.
We'll continue the meeting with the Board of Presidents' report. Actually, I've asked Julie to provide us with an update on the Cup Patterson work, which is school funding. Julie, if you would.
Yes, well, they were supposed to release their recommendations to the governor by the end of February. And guess what? It's the end of February. I think what has happened is, because I'm around the State House a lot, is because the transportation budget got introduced, and they're all caught up with dealing with that, and they need to work that out. But the governor will give his state address on March 5th, which is next week, Tuesday. And I think he'll be previewing what he'll be putting in the budget then. Now, remember, the Cup Patterson Group is trying to figure out a true funding formula for education. They are only going to provide recommendations. The governor does not have to accept them. However, the feeling was because this group has done such, has taken up such an immense task, and it's both Democrats and Republicans, plus superintendents and treasurers, that he wouldn't ignore at least all of the recommendations. But our school advocacy committee is meeting on Tuesday, March 12th, to start planning our advocacy efforts as it goes into the budget process. So Mindy and Holly and I met last night to put an agenda together. And so everybody is invited. For all those people who've gotten riled up about other issues in their townships, I would highly recommend that this is the one issue that we should all be getting behind, because this issue is going to impact them more than any other township issue ever would.
Yeah. I think we should also mention the advocacy committee put together a five-part series.
Yes.
On.
The budget process.
The budget process and how we go from an idea to budget. And I think it's worth a read us out on Facebook. I think part two is out.
Yep, it's on Facebook. We've got, today was part four.
Four.
So tomorrow's part five. And it walks you through the lengthy budget process, the "I'm just a Bill" Olentangie style.
You're not singing about it?
Yeah. Well, for our younger voters, they have no idea what I'm talking about.
Schoolhouse rock.
Yeah. So please pay attention. It's the Olentangie School Advocacy Facebook page. All our information is on it. And we'll be getting it out through other means throughout the district to get that meeting publicized, because everyone is invited. Whether you have a kid in the district or not, this pertains to you. Any additional revenue that we can get at the state is actually local tax relief.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, Mr. Rafe, your superintendent's report.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for.
Everyone for being here. Wow, loud today. Starting off always with our "Living Our Mission" slide. So as you know, we have the National Merit Scholarship Competition. It's based off of the juniors taking the PSAT. All of our National Merit semifinalists that we reported previously have now moved on to officially become National Merit finalists. So we're very proud of those students. And they'll be recognized, obviously, at senior graduation or senior awards programs at all the high schools. But that National Merit semifinalist and finalist represents the top one-half of 1% of students who perform at that level on the PSAT. So that's a tremendous accomplishment. We were recently notified that Freedom Trail Elementary School has been nominated for the National Blue Ribbon School Award. And the award has to go through a nomination process through the Ohio Department of Education. Ohio Department of Education chose 14 schools this year to nominate. Then the school will complete a lengthy application process and combine that with this year's test results, and hopefully will have another school win the Blue Ribbon Award. As you know, we have Olentangie High School, Olentangie Liberty High School, and Saunder Ridge Elementary School. Orange High School should be a Blue Ribbon school, but the State Department changed the testing rules that year, and we missed one indicator, and that cost them that honor. The nomination is actually probably the most difficult thing to get in the process. So we're hopeful that that, I know it would have, Orange would have been our third Blue Ribbon High School had the state not changed the testing parameters that year. So, you know, we had Mr. Demana and his Model UN students here a few meetings ago. Just recently, we had 200 students in the district participate in the simulated United Nations Summit. You know, they came together throughout the school year, though, as Mr. Demana reported. They do research a country, look into the problems, and write that resolution. So this was the culmination of all of their activities in that two-day competition.
I sat through the last two speeches, because Nora went, it was impressive.
Wow, great.
They were good.
Yeah, they, again, it's just like this. I mean, the little choir performance, it's just.
200 kids from all over the district. That's really wow.
And I can't, and the amount of time they put in to do it. And just like these choir kids, the amount of time they put in to do it. They just put so much on their plate.
It was 8:30, 8 o'clock Saturday morning until 10:30 Saturday night.
Yeah.
And then 8 to 12 the next day.
Great.
10:30?
Yes, 10:30 PM.
Do they give them food?
Oh, yeah.
Of course. We have an Equity and Inclusion Workshop coming up. Alicia Behrens, the title of it, "From Kindergarten to Graduation: Building Empathy, Resiliency, and Independence to Help Students Succeed in Life." You know, this whole area, you know, as we know, as we keep trying to address all these non-academic barriers to learning, you know, this is an opportunity for us. We do obviously do a lot of work with our students on a daily basis, but working with our parents is every bit as important. So I encourage all of our parents to attend this workshop, because again, it applies to all of them, kindergarten to graduation. Our summer enrichment experience classes are available out and about. Course offerings, you see a long list there, animation, coding, creative writing, robotics, visual arts. What are we at for registration? Do you know the number yet?
It starts tomorrow.
Oh, I'm sorry, it starts tomorrow, yeah. Zero, word zero, thank you, good.
Can only go up.
I asked somebody to check on that, I forgot it. That's why I didn't get it. And our important dates coming up. Equity Inclusion Workshop, which I just mentioned, again, hard to believe, we're already, I say this with every quarter, because it just goes so fast, end of third quarter. And then our March 14th board meeting will be our next time we'll be together. Any questions?
Mr. Rafe? Thank you, Mr. Rafe. Next item is the Treasurers' Report. Ms. Hatfield?
Absolutely, good evening. So one of the things that we want to point out is on the district website, if you go to the Treasurers' webpage, we have added a Property Tax 101 option there that we are encouraging people to traffic and take a look at. It is a narrative that help explains how real estate and property taxes are collected, the effects of House Bill 920 on that, and what our cost per $100,000 valuation is in our district. So it's a lot of good information about real estate and property taxes, and we encourage people to check that out to get some more information about how that works. Tonight, we have three items on the agenda. We have our January financials, amended appropriations, and our donations that we'd like to recognize. On our January financials, we are headed in a positive direction. Again, of note, we just have the 1.7 million additional revenue. That's, I know, look at him, he's taking it down. This is a one-time reimbursement from Delaware County auditors. When they completed the reappraisal process for tax year 2017, it didn't cost as much to do the reappraisal valuation as they anticipated. And so they returned those fees, a portion of those fees, to the district, which is generating most of that 1.7. The rest of our expenditures are trending on pace for this moment in time. So we'll continue to monitor those as we move forward, month over month. And then for the donations, we just want to recognize a $20,000 donation from Olentangie Heritage PTO to the elementary, and $2,820 from Swinson Drive-In Restaurants to Olentangie Local Schools. It is our understanding that the donation from Heritage PTO is for technology and several other items. It's a collective donation that they've been giving over some time. And we are happy to welcome Swinson's Drive-In Restaurants and their donation as they opened and did that fundraiser for the district. Are there any questions about the financials or any of the information we have tonight? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item is public participation. Do we have any public participations?
No, we do not.
All right, we have a discussion item, but ask Mr. Wright, please come to the podium and talk about the district calendar, 2020, 2021.
Good evening, and thank you very much for having me in tonight. Want to briefly share with you a few areas as we look at the draft for the 2020-2021 district calendar. First, my apologies that the draft got a little muddled. Elaine Eddy from the Olentangie Teachers Association and I spent a great amount of time looking at various drafts with a lot of different variables. And so electronically, we have several versions. And what we're presenting to you tonight is what we feel is most consistent with the calendar draft that we have been presenting in recent years. Tonight is part of our annual process of compliance with both the Higher Revised Code and Board of Education Policy 8610. Part of this discussion is to make sure that we are clear on the total number of hours. We are scheduling our students in the school year, the length of our school day, and we're setting the beginning and ending dates for instruction. The other component of this through those two areas is that is consistent with any negotiated agreement. So the draft that we present to you meets all of those. Very quickly, our high school students are scheduled to be in attendance for 1,167 hours and 45 minutes. Our middle school students, 1,138 hours and 55 minutes. And our elementary students, 1,066 hours and 50 minutes. Our students in grades seven through 12 are required to be in attendance 1,001 hours. And our students in grades one through six, 910 hours. So we are well above that. What it actually means, we could miss 25 days of school and still meet our minimum hours that the state requires. So the length of. I'm sorry?
That should be confidential.
It's a good thing everyone left.
They're going to be demanding today.
We build in some cushion. All right. Our length of school day is not being proposed to change for next year. Our high school students will be in attendance 6 hours and 45 minutes. Middle school, 6 hours, 35 minutes. And our elementary students, 6 hours and 10 minutes. So those are the hours that we are to at least record as part of what we did to plan this draft. And the last part that I wanted to share with you is to make sure that we include the parts that are consistent with our negotiated agreement, which means we will have 185 teacher days, 173 student days, and then mixed in amongst those will be six teacher workdays, four district-driven professional development days, and then two in lieu of conference days. So that's the difference between our 173 student days and our 185 teacher days. So with that little piece of information, before I talk about the calendar highlights, any questions on those facts shared?
Our negotiated agreements are also now tied to hours, not snow days, correct?
That is correct.
As you may see, the other districts may have snow day issues because they haven't lined their contracts yet.
Yeah. Hickington had to make up a snow day on President's Day. They were in school.
And we have, in the last couple of contract cycles and negotiations, worked to catch up to those state changes.
Right.
So, okay, our calendar highlights for this year. We do have a unique change to the beginning of the school year in that first week. For the first time in my 20 years in the district, we will have three teacher days and two student days. We have added, as part of negotiations, a workday at the beginning of the school year. We are still working on the order of the traditional events that occur. We will have a traditional uninterrupted teacher workday. We will have a convocation day, and we will have a workday paired with an elementary open house. We are still in discussions about what those days look like, but they will occur within those three days. And we are also very excited about the opportunity it affords us by having a two-day student week. I hope to be back to talk to you about our concept of a back-to-school student retreat across all 26 of our buildings that our principals have begun to discuss in each of their respective buildings. So once we start our, we will stay in the third week of August. So our official student start day that we are presenting is Thursday, August 20th. It's the latest that I recall in quite some time. We have our traditional breaks, interruptions throughout the calendar. Our draft professional development day, which usually coincides with the Delaware County Fair, is in the middle of September. Our end of first quarter and workday are at the third week of October. We have our traditional Thanksgiving break, which does include one of our in lieu of conference days, and then our second professional development day at the end of November. We will end our first semester at winter break, and our first semester will end on Friday, December 18th. Then we have, listened to our feedback, we've looked at a couple of different models, and that's where the confusion, we wrote less-than-two-week winter break model, but what we are presenting you is a two-week winter break model. You'll notice there on Monday, the 21st of December, we are embedding the teacher workday in that break. In the past couple of calendars, we have brought the teachers back a day early, or we've brought them on a Monday, and students not till Tuesday. It really, to extend it after two weeks, we want to avoid that. So we're all starting fresh on Monday, January 4th, in 2021. As we continue on out, we see our traditional four-day weekend with a professional development day wrapped with President's Day in February. Our third quarter ends in the middle of March. And then for the past several drafts, we have made our spring break the last week of March. That stays consistent. As we move to the end of April, our second in lieu of conference day is Friday, April 30th. And that was essentially just a day that Elaine and I discussed and felt it most, at the middle ground breaks up, spring break and the end of school year. It's the one day off, if you will, and we needed to include that day somewhere. So we found the middle part for that. And as we finish out the calendar, our last student day is Thursday, the 27th of May, with the teachers on their last workday being Friday, the 28th. Everyone is completed with their year before Memorial Day on this draft we present to you. So the final thing that I wanted to share with you, and I know there's been some discussion in the past, we've been asked sometimes, why are we not putting certain things on this calendar? Remember, this is a draft of the instructional calendar. It is not, per se, an event calendar. Those events that are either specific to the building or the rare event that may be district-wide. All those pieces of information we found on the respective building websites. And our buildings do a tremendous job of organizing their events based upon this framework that we set tonight. So our last piece of information shared with you tonight is our communication plan. This is our first reading of our calendar draft, if you will. It will be available visually and for feedback to community members and our teaching membership beginning sometime in the week of March 11th. We want to make sure that we work with our protocols to put that out appropriately. It will be available for at least 30 days. And we anticipate being back to you to present a product for your approval at the Thursday, April 25th, board meeting. At this time, I'll take any questions or comments that you might have about the draft.
Well, it's not really about your draft, it's very clear. But if, that's the latest we've started school. So when are sports allowed to commence? Is that still August 1st?
August 1st typically. Ohio High School, actually, they do have that rolled out. And it's typically been August 1st. If we start earlier, they've allowed schools that start earlier than we're anticipating to start like that Monday, that July, whatever that date would be. But on this draft, I would anticipate that August 1st would be the start date for athletics in that year.
Okay. And last question, Easter that year, is that part of the spring break?
Actually, it is, yes.
It does fall.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that doesn't happen very often.
Other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we have, next item is treasure action items. Ms. Hatfield, please present the treasure action items.
Yes, please, I would like to present treasure.
Present Treasure Action Items A through C for your approval, please. So moved.
Second it.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Thank you. Mrs. Feesal?
Yes.
Mr. Barts?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Rafe, please present the Superintendent Action Item.
Anything to pull out?
I don't approve that.
Okay, good, alright. Super, uh, present Superintendent Action Items A through E for approval.
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Alright, Ms. Haffield, please call the roll.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. Barts?
Yes.
Mrs. Feesal?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.
With that, I'll, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second please.
I'll second.
Just trying to throw you off.
I'll second, I didn't want to take a look at Mrs. Patrick.
Discussions, next board meeting is, uh, February 28th.
March 14th.
March 14th.
Not doing this again.
March 14th.
It's Groundhog Day.
Uh, Ms. Haffield, please call the roll.
I was gonna say, Groundhog Day.
Mrs. Feesal?
Yes.
Mr. Barts?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.